Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Eustace City Hall. This is a regular city commission meeting of the City of Eustace. It's 6:00 PM. It's Thursday, May 6, 2021. For those that would like to, we're going to stand for a moment of silence, and then our Vice Mayor is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to join us, please stand. Amen. Madam Vice Mayor?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. I can officially call our meeting to order. Mary, is there a quorum present and proper notice been given?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Mr. Knight, are there any agenda updates?
Yes, sir. Given that Items 7.7 and 7.8 were tabled by the LPA, those items will require no action on tonight's agenda.
Thank you so much, sir. All right. Commissioners, before us, we have the approval of minutes from our April 1, 2021, regular city commission meeting; April 15, 2021, city commission workshop on enclaves; April 15, 2021, regular city commission meeting. What's the will of our commission?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the minutes of April 1, April 15, and April 15.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Al Hoop Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Cobb.
Aye.
Commissioner Hawkins.
Aye.
Mayor Holland.
Aye. Next, we have presentations. Our first one is update of the Housing Rehabilitation Program with Lake Community Action Agency. Michael Robson. Mike, will you hear? There you are. Come on up. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you for having me again. Just to give a quick update since the last time I was here, the program has improved significantly as far as the awareness is concerned. I think some of the efforts that have been made online, and I think not only that, through some of the bills that have been distributed to some of the residents, have worked. We have gotten a number of applicants to come in to apply. And since I came last time, we've had about, you know, seven additional applicants that are now approved for the program. We have had a total of 13 individuals that have applied for the program. At this time, we have completed construction on at least three of the homes. They are fully completed. Since the last time when I came here to do a presentation, we only had one that was completed due to some of the COVID restrictions that we had with the program. But thus far, the program has been progressing, and we have been, you know, seeing a good number of individuals coming into the office. So thus far, right now, we've had at least 13 people to apply. We have 12 applications that are approved. We have about, you know, one house that is currently under construction at this time. So if there's any other updates that you guys would like to have, I'll be happy to provide that.
Mike, you say there were 12 approved?
Yes.
How many were completed since the last time you were here?
We've had two houses completed since the last time we were here.
Okay. Have those bills been submitted to the city?
Yes. We have invoiced the city.
Okay. You have the addresses for those? Can you get them to us?
Yes. 1312 Lewis Court and 714 Getford Court. And we'll be invoicing for 1223 McDonald's, no, 1223 Hazard Avenue as of tomorrow.
1312 Lewis Court?
Yes.
What did we do on that? Do you know our hand?
1312 Lewis Court? We had to install an energy recovery ventilator because of the numbers after we ran our, I guess you could say, our leakage test on the house. We found that the ventilation was inadequate for the house. So we had to introduce mechanical ventilation. In addition to that, we replaced the heating and cooling system and upgraded the ductwork in the attic and so forth.
So that was the new air conditioning, pretty much?
Yes.
On the 1312, let's see, that's 1312 Lewis. On the one that you completed during the reporting period of 331, 2021, that would be the big one, the 13,000?
Yes. That would be 1312 Lewis Court. And the other would be 714 Getford Court.
1312 Lewis Court. And then the Getford is for, I don't have that. And you submitted that bill?
Yes.
Since you were here, you've done two. Since the beginning of the program, how many have we done?
We've done three homes. We've completed three.
Okay. And we know that COVID had a lot to do with what we did last year.
Yeah.
So we picked up a total of 13, 12 or 13?
As far as applications are concerned?
Yes.
Yes. That is correct.
And we've approved how many?
We've approved seven. Yeah. The last time was pretty dismal.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
It was pretty dismal. I think now the word is getting out. It's being spread. And I think as some of the homes are getting completed, some of the residents are starting to see that. And I think the awareness of the program is getting a whole lot better. And I think that's going to help out a whole lot. Just as a matter of fact, my assistant told me today, as I was out of the office, we got two new applicants coming today. So in what we're doing, in addition to that, we're also making referrals through one of our other programs that we have, Lake Community Action Agency. So anytime that a client comes in for one of our, what we call our utility assistance program, we make the referral if they're within the district area and that sort of thing to help boost up some of the more of the awareness of the program availability.
I know that the last time you were here, there were some things that were on back order.
Yes. Yeah, we're still having a few problems with construction delays as far as the equipment because the equipment that we're installing to make sure that the proper ventilation are in the houses, some of those parts and pieces in the plants are not available because they laid off a lot of people in those plants. So we're still having some of those delays in those areas. And sometimes with some of the doors that we're finding also too.
Okay. And typically, how long does it take to complete? Or it's just a matter of what it entails?
Typically, it usually will take us, you know, three weeks to get, you know, a house complete. But now it's taking even up to seven to eight weeks to get them done now.
Okay. And we have seven in the hopper right now?
Yeah. That is correct.
With six additional you're reviewing and two new that came in the door, correct?
Yes.
If I can make a suggestion, I was sitting here doing the math and knowing how much money we allocated, I would ask that we suspend acceptance of applications and allow Mr. Roberson to go through those things, to do the inspections, and then to gauge how much funding would be necessary to do all the repairs on the homes that have been submitted and possibly accepted, and then figure out how much money's left over. Then we may be able to reopen applications if we feel there's enough money left over on the 250 that we originally allocated.
That's the six in the hopper plus the two that came in today?
The two, I would say the two that came in the door we'll include for consideration. He can accept applications if they come in the door, but at this point, the only ones we're considering are the ones that came in the door. That's up to today.
Anna, are you good with that?
I have a question. This ventilation system that you're speaking of, how much are those?
They typically installed, depending upon the size, about $2,500 bucks.
Now, the majority of the people that have come to you, was it through the mailers, word of mouth, or do we know?
Really don't know exactly where they're coming from. We know that the majority of the ones that are coming in now are the result of online advertising. Yeah.
Anna, are you okay with suspending the program?
Yes.
I have a question.
Yeah, please go ahead.
On the seven that has been approved, do you know what kinds of services they're going to need?
We won't know until we go out and do the inspection. Only thing that we know that they'll kind of put down an idea of what they need. Some of them say, well, I need a new AC system. I need new windows. And that's all we have on the application. And until we do the inspection, then we kind of have a better idea in a sense of exactly what they need in the house and what they can be approved for.
So you don't do the inspection before you approve it?
No, no. We approve an application first. We income qualify them first to make sure they meet the requirements. They don't have, their taxes are up to date, and the no liens on the property and that sort of thing. And then after that, once they are approved, then we go out and perform the inspections on the house.
And do you ever determine that maybe you can't help them or you can't help them? So would they definitely receive services because they've been approved? Or would you go out and you see certain things that you know you can't do or they don't meet?
There are sometimes, they can be income approved. The application can be approved, but they can be unapproved when we go out and do the inspection. When we notice that there's a whole lot of structural damage that we don't want to take the liability for, then we'll have to deny the house.
Are you okay with the suspension of the program?
Yes.
Karen, you're good with it also. Willie, I think the last time you offered to go out with Michael and walk the neighborhood, has that happened?
Yes, and I haven't received a call, and I was looking forward to it, Mike.
Okay. I'll tell you what, we'll make that phone call next week.
Now it's in the summer much, so I don't know. Yeah, but just hit me up. I'll go out with you.
Okay, okay.
The will of the commission is to suspend the program with the applicants that are already in, and then we can reevaluate it as we go forward.
Yes, sir.
All right? Thank you, Michael.
Suspend new applications coming in.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
Next presentation we have is from Trout Lake. Always good to have you here.
Always good to be here. And actually, this is the end of my seventh year. I've been here for longer than I realized. I'm like, oh, my goodness. I feel like I just got here yesterday and that. We wanted to give you a little report on what Trout Lake has been doing and how we've made it through the year. I know I've talked to some of you, and you've been very concerned about us. So this is kind of what we've been up to. With this year, we've really had to relook at what's a nature center. It's not what it used to be and to think about it. Everybody has a different idea of what a nature center is based on what they may have experienced or done in the past and that. But research that we're seeing has shown that communities perceive nature centers as environmental connections. They see it as becoming aware of things, providing places to learn, and take knowledgeable actions, which is what we really want to have. We want people to have the knowledge to be able to do behavior change and do things to improve the world and protect the environment. They're also seen as providing leisure, hiking, walking, getting outdoors, restoring the others. And I know in the past year, Trout Lake has definitely served in that capacity. We had over 19,000 people physically on the property last year hiking the trails. We had people from Jacksonville, Tampa, St. Pete, and that. I don't know how they found us, but they came, and we were glad that they were there. One of the other things that they see with them is we provide civic engagement. We bring people together. We help create community and a sense of community. And then finally, we give community resilience. We contribute to the community's economy. We develop a sense of pride often with the local community. Trout Lake wouldn't be there if it wasn't for the communities, and it's a result of the community. With the children, we try to serve as a hub for learning and connections, not only about nature, but also with the community and what works within the neighborhoods and things like that. We want to get them able to look at addressing some of the global challenges that we know are coming. Florida itself has many challenges coming from climate and what's happening with climate change, to saltwater intrusion, to development and energy demands, things like that. So we want to get that. We want to inform them, inspire them, and eventually motivate them to become active, to become involved in their communities, and to make good decisions. Now, I know some of you know Trout Lake very well, but some of the new commissioners, you may not have been out there. We are a 230-acre preserve. We are a donation-based nonprofit, and this is our 33rd year of being in operations. So we've been around for a while and that. And we were started by the community, and we're supported by the community. And we have certainly seen that in this past year, how the community has really come forward. My board has not approved, but they support what's called the Children's Outdoor Bill of Rights, that children should have a safe place to play. They should get out to go fishing. They should be able to see a bird and do various things outdoors. Society now, some of our children don't have access to that. We want to provide that there at Trout Lake. We also want to expand it and get it to go into the neighborhoods and the other areas there. In addition, we have some core values that we support as Trout Lake. We want to respect each other, camaraderie, diversity, honesty, have hands-on experiences. It's been a little hard to do the hands-on this past year. We've had to modify a lot of stuff, but we're still going and getting along with that. Now, these were our numbers for 2020. And as you can see, we had over 19,000 visitors. Education participants, we got nailed with COVID rights on our big field trips. And field trips have kind of happened this year, but not so much. It's been a little difficult to be able to do that. But in 2021, in the first three months of this year, we've had, we've worked with over 1,031 students. So we're back out there with the students and teachers. We've had over 6,000 people come to Trout Lake just in three months. And we've done other contacts with about 800 other people and that. So we're still busy. We're still going, and we're still doing a lot. Some of the things of what we've done this past year is we recovered from our break-in. We've done very well with that. If you come out to Trout Lake, it should look a little different. We've expanded and improved, and hopefully you will be there. We have a security system in, so hopefully we'll never have another break-in, or if we do, it'll be stopped a lot sooner than it ever was. And we were able to stay open and that. What we're looking at doing now in the future is we've developed a YouTube channel. We're trying to go virtual. It's a little challenging because we don't have very good internet connection out of Trout Lake. We have borrowing the Lake County Water Authority's internet connection to be able to do some things. We're trying to do virtual trails. We've done virtual STEM nights with the schools. We are doing in-school presentations, and we've expanded our presentations to be offered from what's a reptile to adaptations to interdependence and things like that. So we're doing a lot along there. We're continuing our capital campaign. Right now, we're in the site planning phase for our parking area and our maintenance and finishing the road work. So that's with the engineers being done. We'll be eventually coming back to you for site plan approval and things that go with that. We're looking at restoring our former program. This summer, we are working with Parks and Recs departments, which we did last year, but the schools are back this summer. So we are actually going to be doing ELC programs and that. So one of the things we're hoping to do next year is there's a program called the County Nature Challenge, and we want to take that to Lake County. And you challenge people to go out in their neighborhoods and find and document nature. And you kind of have a city compete against the city, and the city compete against organizations. In this past year, Orlando was involved in Jacksonville, but there's nothing in Lake County. But we really promote our nature, so we need to do something to get involved with that nature challenge. So hopefully, we can work with the cities and the counties to do that. We also did an egg hunt. And I didn't think it was very interesting, but a lot of people got very involved in it. We'd like to take it wider. You find a seven-inch styrofoam egg on a piece of property, you get a letter that goes with it. You unscramble the letters. You get a saying or a word. And we want to get them to go out to various properties, whether it's at Fairland Park or something within the city, or it's over at Hickory Point, or different things like that. I think it's a way to get people outdoors, to enjoy the outdoors, and promote our resources that we have. So that's some of the things that we're looking at doing next year. For your consideration, we hope you will consider continuing your funding support that you've given us. We certainly appreciate it. We hope you will continue writing the word about us and our programs. We are planning a controlled burn, and we would like some assistance. I know it's limited what your fire department can do, but I know they can help out with some of that. And traffic backups on County Road 44. They are getting pretty bad. And I know there's development and things planned on 44, and we'd like to keep that, you to keep that in the back of your mind for whatever goes on there. And possibly, if there's anything you can help working with the county and so forth, we'd appreciate that. We also want you to consider protecting any wildlife connections that Trout Lake has to other natural areas in doing that. So those are the things we'd like you to consider. We understand there's limitations that you can or can't do. But it's been a busy year. We're pretty excited about what's happened. It's been challenging, but we've done pretty well, I think, in that. And we did do a manatee program, the water thrower. We have 30 manatees that live full-time in this area, so we're trying to promote that. Most people don't realize that. They feel they are coming here because we have food, and many of our manatees have been suffering in the Indian River Lagoon. Between January and now, over 700 manatees have died in the Indian River Lagoon, and it's basically because of starvation. They had an algae bloom. Their sea grasses died and some of that. But most of the people here don't realize they're here. So we want to protect them and let our voters know. So anything we can do along with that to increase the awareness, we appreciate it. And I would like to introduce Stan Napier. He is the president. I think most of you know him and that. But he is one of our visionary leaders. And of course, Ron is on board also and that. If you have any questions?
Any questions, Commissioner? Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Next presentation we have is by the Eustace Community Alliance.
May I give a little bit of a?
Yeah, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Before they get started, I kind of wanted to make some comments. I know many of you remember that in 2010, the Resource Center was established to provide services to the community. And in 2015, Kid Central felt that they had met the goals and terminated the program. And so Buddy Walker has been presenting community programs at 1128 Clifford Street. And, but it's not been the kinds of services that the Resource Center had. And it's my pleasure that I got to meet these wonderful people who, in conjunction and partnership with Buddy and the city, want to revitalize the Resource Center. I know they're committed because so far, they have painted the interior and exterior of the building. They've cleared the community garden. They're really focused and ready to provide services to the community. So I'm really proud of them, and I'm happy that they're here, and I want them to share with you what their plans are. So I present to the Community Alliance, Eustace Community Alliance.
Thank you. And good evening, everyone. I'm Dina John. I live here in Eustace with my husband and our three kids. My oldest is at boarding school out of state. I serve as the president of Eustace Community Alliance, and I'm excited to share information with you about the reopening of the former Bates Neighborhood Resource Center. But before we get to the bulk of the presentation, I do want to acknowledge and say thank you to the members of the board who are here with me tonight. They've worked so hard on this project. They are Ronald Musselman, our vice president. We have Lawrence Allenbaugh, our secretary. Then we have Terry Jackson, who serves as our treasurer. And last but not least, Kelly Hadley, our jack-of-all-trades, project and events manager. So again, thank you to them. Our mission. So the mission of Eustace Community Alliance, or ECA, is to provide a holistic approach to providing services. And so what do I mean by holistic approach? I know it's like a fancy word. It means we approach things by looking at the big picture. We believe that one part affects the whole. So with that in mind, we look to address the mind, body, and spirit. Through education and resource tools, we will be building a stronger community, one person at a time. A little bit about Eustace Community Alliance. So in partnership with Community Beyond Borders, under the helm of Pastor Buddy Walker, and with the support of the City of Eustace, thank you, City Manager, we began the work of revitalizing the former Bates Neighborhood Resource Center. And so I'd like to show you a brief video.
I didn't realize there was a video. I apologize.
Okay.
Here we go. Here we go.
There we go. All righty.
Has it sound with it?
It does have some music.
Sing, Serita.
We can hum along, everyone.
You can kind of tell them what's going on.
All right. We're here. This is where we're revitalizing the former center. We're repainting. We redid the insides. We redid the floors, painted the doors, painted the walls, changed everything. That's Lawrence hard at work scraping the floors. And so it's a completely new interior. And so this is what it looks like now. So programs and activities. What will we do at ECA? You can start creatively thinking, and that list is really endless. And so these are some of the programs. We put the areas into different buckets. So first would be our Aging and Senior Program. Our senior program will offer events like an ice cream social, computer training, health and wellness classes that focus on diet and exercise. Then we look forward to our youth program. ECA will work with potential partners to have social events, such as perhaps a movie night. We look to recruit volunteer mentors and work with partners in helping youth with employment and educational resources. And again, ECA will look to supplement the current resources that are within our community and also facilitate the access of those resources within the community. Our education center will be open to all ages because, as we know, learning never stops. And these are just a few of the resources that will be made available. Tutoring and GED preparation will be one of our top initiatives at the Resource Center. Life classes. Again, in keeping with the holistic approach, ECA will look to work with partners and offer exercise, wellness, and courses that promote and support a healthy lifestyle. Funding in the future. So along with grants and sponsorships, we are actively seeking donations. This is the important part. We are presently in need of computer equipment. Our current computers are older, and they're running on an older operating system. So in-kind donations are appreciated. So we hope to build and maintain partnerships, not just in the city, but within the region. And so over time, we foresee ECA being a key access point for new and existing residents. So that was the last piece of the presentation this evening. And I invite everyone here to really consider supporting ECA and the Resource Center. Support can come in many ways. You can be a champion of our project in the community. You can share information about ECA on your social media. Positive comments, please. I invite everyone here and those watching on the livestream, hey, Mom, to come out to the grand reopening on Saturday, May 22 from 12 to 3:00 PM from 12 to 3 p.m. at 1128 Clifford Avenue in Eustis. And I hope each of you will schedule to participate in an event once we get started. The Resource Center is more than just a building for Eustis. It's a step in the right direction for us to move forward and provide a place for generations to come. I want to thank you all for listening tonight. I appreciate your time, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Dina, you and the board have done a great job. Thank you so much. And Madam Vice Mayor, I know your heart. And a lot of hard work went into what you've done out there prior. So thank you for your leadership in that as well. So thank you all.
I'm just glad I kept my composure tonight. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all, we look forward to working with you.
One of the things that I'd like to say is I've, I've gone out and I've helped them. I've volunteered and helped them with this project. And they, they really do have a vision. And I as well invite everyone here, whether you're in the county or whether you're in the city, to, to think about volunteering and coming in. This is a community project. If Eustis truly is a community like we say it is, I say we all just pitch in and help out.
Thank you, Willie. Next, we have the acceptance of the comprehensive annual financial report for the year in September 30th, 2020. Mike Shepherd.
Mayor, Members of the Commission, Mike Shepherd, Finance Director. There's an old accounting adage when you first started Accounting 101. That credits towards the door, debits towards the window. That's why my office is set up that way. I get confused when I'm in here. All right, this, the, the actual report will be presented to you at a later date with a full audit presentation in there. This one here gives you the same, all the, the numbers, and those should not change. Every year of the CAFER, it's a very technical, intrusive, sleep-producing document. It's, it's a lot of fun. The, the budget sets the groundwork for it. And it's your roadmap to get to the end destination, which is the CAFER. So there's two pieces to our puzzle. We're starting to, we've already started doing the, the budget process. This, this year is the end of it. Everyone who does $250,000 in revenues gets to do a CAFER. And it's throughout the nation and Canada. Every year, the, the CAFER remains the same. Has the introductory section, finance, required supplemental statistical information, which gives you a little bit of background on, on the City of Eustis. And again, it's difficult to read, and it'll put you to sleep quick. Basis, the basis of accounting, oh, I already told you that. Never mind. The introductory section has the profile of the city. Gives you some of the financial conditions that we experienced this last year. COVID was material. In some instances, we lost revenues because of, and others, we gained revenues because of funding from the federal government. We have the long-term financial planning section, which generally requires the bonding and other financing methods that we may use to, to accomplish the things that need to be done. And then the, in the future, we're going to have the eastern plant. Well, we had the eastern plant. So this next few years, we'll have the main plant expansion. And we may be lucky enough to have some funding through the federal government. And if we don't have that, we, we can go through the state revolving fund. The introductory session, is that the same one? We've done this for quite a while now. I think I did the first one 32 years ago. I missed a few, but this was the 32nd year last year for 2019. That, that particular, it gets reviewed by many accountants. And they, they grade you. And every year you, they'll give you notes and you have to improve on it. So it's a process, but we've, we've done this for quite some time now. A few years back, they made us go through and do the statement of activities. And what that does, and prior to that, you used to have to have the, the general, the general governmental accounts. They were basically a cash basis and partially modified accrual. But a number of years ago, they made us go value every piece of street that we had. Sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and stormwater. So the, the further back you go in the, the statements, the more cash basis it is. That final statement of activities is very similar to any other enterprise fund. And it's a process that you go through to, to make it so. We, we did fairly well, and a lot of that had to do with some of the money we, we got from the CARES Act. Both, both funds, or both types of funds did very well this year. And this is the general fund as more or less a cash basis. And we did very well with that. Some of the special revenue funds, we did have, the, the change in net position is income or loss, basically. And the expenditures that we had for the special revenue funds could have been in the street proven fund, where a lot of that money is spent on the streets. We also have the sales tax revenue fund, which is the one cent, one cent tax that we get. And we can overspend in that because we do have a fund balance that's available for us. So that's a, it's a little bit misleading, but you know, it includes the, you can see at the very end, the fund balance is still $5 million for the special revenue funds in totality. Yeah, that's really great for parties. Yeah, who is the largest employer? And it's Publix. They've remained that since '08, '09. And the number of books we have in the library, on in 2000.
I was going to say all of them, but.
You're right. Exactly. Good answer. And who pays the most in property taxes? And this year, it was Florida Foods. Prior to that, it was Sprint, Embark, but they moved a lot of their assets out of the city. And that's it till next year.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions of mine?
Good job.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
Do you really need to do a form of acceptance, or is it just part of the audit?
I'd rather you do the, I'll, I'll give you something later when the, when the auditors give us the actual full report. You'll have the hard copy. I assume you all want hard copies. And you also want a PDF of it. Okay?
Right.
When you get those, I'll make sure that you, we'll do an acceptance in that. It'll be shorter and quicker.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. And next, we have appointments. We're coming down to appointment to the Eustis Housing Authority Board of Directors. Forrest, do you want to come up and introduce us to Fay Weaver? I know you're kicked back there, relax. You know I was going to have to get you up. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Horace Jones, Executive Director, Eustis Housing Authority. I want to introduce Ms. Fay Weaver, who's under consideration for reappointment. She's been with us for three and a half years now and done an exceptional job. She has always shown an interest in the Housing Authority and making an impact for the Eustis citizens. So without further ado, Fay Weaver.
Good evening, Ms. Weaver. How are you?
Nervous.
Nervous? Don't, don't be nervous.
Okay, for you that don't know me, I am Fay Weaver. And I am really enjoying myself on this board and the accomplishments. Thank you for the reappointment.
Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Folks, I'm looking for a motion to reappoint Fay Weaver. Thank you so much.
A second.
All right, got a first and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner LaHoob Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Cobb.
Aye.
Commissioner Hawkins.
Aye.
Mayor Holland.
Aye. Congratulations and thank you. As you're coming down to audience to be heard, this is to address the Commission on something that's not on the agenda tonight. If you do come up, you have three minutes. Mr. Nyberg. Time's running, David.
David Surtur, you mean my address?
Yes, sir.
You know, families are so important. You know, Eustis, America's hometown. You know, opportunities, vitality, destination for arts and culture, thriving downtown, beautiful lakefront. I love coming to Eustis. I'm from Lake County, Florida. I live downtown. I'm from Florida. I go to St. Cabell. Nobody goes up there. You talk about children and kids and the environment. I, since Obama came in office, he talked about change, I walked in a parade. I got a bottle of perfume covered. It may not happen, but it takes small steps. Families are so important. Families are what we're talking about in the county. So important. Raising our kids, my mother just turned 893. My mother has a list. So people, I, I go to school more in Lake County. I've gone to South County, I've gone to Broad County. I've gone to 15, I just came. Oh, no, sir, sorry. My God, our kids, excuse me, the governor's office. I go to Tamaras, they give me a bumper stickers. Children, elementary, you know, right here. Tabariak Thompson, I got his car. He went to the elementary school. I'm Mrs. Coleman, who's on the school board. And I'm in that front of that. And I'm honored to be there. I'm in honor of being a teacher. I want you to know, kids are worried about their environment. I got, this is all over the world, Sarasota. Am I saying, oh yeah, Sarasota, there's a county, Sarasota County. I go to a lot of conferences, I get to go home to the Lake County. I was a candidate for Lake County, you cannot make everybody happy. I've been to child parks. Dude, I was just in a Venetian Village. We're at child parks, parks on parks. They're going to get a bike trail for the child. I was at Mount Door yesterday, I was, Dr. was at Mount Door meeting, I was in a planning zone. Our towns in Lake County are wonderful. We're in a central part of the city. You talk about traffic. You should see traffic in Sarasota. You can't even move. This is a place to live, there's no hurricanes. But by God, our governor and his wife are working so hard. You know, I know children, babies. What kind of mayor I have, I got plenty of others, I'm honored to have.
Time, sir.
Eustis, oh, I just want you to know, our religious leaders work so hard for us. I have Fiona McCallough, teacher, teacher. You know, our representatives, our senators, people should go up there. They get them, and they get them. Because our kids' future is what it's all about. My gals, the principal, you go up across the street to the graduation, they raise, we're covering this ass, what? God bless you. Thank you, David.
Don't forget your things. Anyone else, Mr. Nyberg?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else that'd like to address the Commission on anything that's not on the agenda this evening? Not seeing any, we'll move ahead. Next thing we have is our consent agenda. There are four items on the consent agenda. Is there anything anybody wants pulled off to, for discussion? Not hearing any, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move approval.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Not hearing any, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner LaHoob Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Cobb.
Aye.
Commissioner Hawkins.
Aye.
Mayor Holland.
Aye.
Mr. Attorney.
Good evening, Mayor. First item is Resolution 2120. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Lake County, Florida, authorizing adjustment to the City of Eustis rates for water, wastewater, reclaimed water, and provide for an annual adjustment for ordinance number 1610, effective June 1st, 2021 through June 1st, 2025.
Mike Shepherd, Finance Director, Mayor, Members of the Commission. As we discussed last commission meeting, the rate study that we performed in-house went and provided for a 2.5% increase every year for the next five years. I presume that we're okay in doing the resolution. The ordinance later on will be the second reading to allow water rates to also be done by resolution this year. So it's 2.5%. Coming up, the, what we'll end up doing if it's approved, starting the 1st of June, we will send out the new rates to everyone in their utility bills. And then July 1, we'll start the new rates. So, any questions?
Seeing no questions, would any members of the public like to speak on Resolution 2120?
You know, when God calls, you know, to go to the bathroom, you gotta go. I apologize. But, you know, I want to get out of here, I've got other places to go. I want to let you know, you're the elected officials, anybody could run for office. I've run for office. I wonder if anybody knows I ran for Lake County Water Authority, I did my petitions, but qualified. Somebody hit me. And a proponent of ordinances that you got going, you got many of them. I know wastewater, I've worked in the streets. I'm certified water damper. Besides the flowers, I love flowers. Flower power. You know, you know, whether you know or not, this great mayor is in charge of funerals in San Francisco, I'll just say. I've worked in funerals, I know how to be quiet. Our life goes on, one day at a time. I don't drink. In healthcare, this is behavioral health week. Today was God's Prayer Day, Prayer Day. And April 2nd was the St. Day of Florida, besides Good Friday. Because it is. Florida, 900 people a day are moving to Florida. This Florida's the place to be. Sunshine State. Hey, I know we had 480 million boxes of oranges that one time. Now we have 48 million. What happened to them? HLV, that wasn't being grossed, long, long business. I was in meetings, I've been at so many meetings at St. Cabell. It was my honor. It was a historic session.
David, anything on this resolution?
I am a proponent of it.
All right. Thank you so much. Drive safely, my friend.
Would anyone else like to speak on Resolution 2120? Seeing none, back to you, Commissioner.
Commissioners, before us, we have Resolution Number 21-20. What's the will of our commission?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution Number 21-20.
Thank you so much.
I think I second it.
You think you second it? Thank you so much. Any further discussion? Not hearing any, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner LaHoob Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Cobb.
Aye.
Commissioner Hawkins.
Aye.
Mayor Holland.
Aye.
Ordinance 2032, this is the second and final reading and ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Florida, voluntarily annexing approximately 20.691 acres of real property located on the north side of County Road 44A, east of Eldorado Lake Drive. This property is not legally contiguous to the city, so your options tonight are to either continue it, to a date certain, or to deny the, the ordinance this evening.
Commissioner.
If I may.
Go ahead.
Is the applicant present to present any argument or evidence tonight?
Tim's on the back row back there.
Tim, did you want to come up and say anything?
Mr. Attorney, you're on the first one or the second one? We're on 2032. Second reading. That's not mine. Anyone else like to speak on this ordinance?
Tricia Walker?
Hi, I am Tricia Walker. My husband and I live on West Eldorado, right around the corner from what you're proposing to annex. We, and we are against the annexation, of course, because it's so nice and rural out there. But we're mainly concerned about the density out there. My husband and I, I know we're part of the growth issues because we've only, we've been out here a little less than four years. We each came from, I grew up in College Park in Orlando, which was a little area in Orlando that was more like a little city. We didn't have to go out of the area to get anything. And my husband grew up in Winter Garden. We raised our family in Lockhart before the 14 and the 429 came through. And we had always planned to go back out to West Orange County when we retired. But the growth out there and in Claremont, we had always come through Eustis when we were going to Ocala to camp. So we changed our thing up here, and we really fell in love with the area. And we found our forever home out here. And I know that people are moving out here more because of the area. And we truly do enjoy the rural out there. But we enjoy the first Fridays of Eustis. We participate in a lot that comes out here. And I know. And I know my sister's also moved out here, my son lives in Pine Lakes now, I have one son in Tangerine, and a nephew that lives out here in Taveras. We all bought existing homes on two to five acres or canal frontage, and we realized the growth is coming, but we would really like you to consider the surrounding areas of Thrill Hill for what it is before changing and adding large density of homes to out there, and what it will do. And I know that, at one, I've been coming to these meetings since October, and I know at one of the meetings, it was stated that the commission owes it to the City of Eustis to consider the annexation. All of us are still residents of Lake County, maybe we owe it to Lake County to try and keep it a little more rural where it is. So, and I know that people that are coming out here, where they've been talking about how busy forty-four and the Trout Lake, and I know how busy it is getting there, but, and people are moving here from the city and from the northern states, and they'll like the rural area, and they would buy homes for one-acre homes, we're on two-and-a-half acres, but one acre is, is, is nice. Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Just please consider the keeping it rural residential. Thank you.
Lloyd Kennedy?
We're not, folks, we're not gonna do this tonight, we'll clear the room if that's the way it's gonna be. We're not gonna applaud, we're not gonna cheer, we're gonna have this meeting, and we're gonna get done with it. Lloyd Kennedy, Lloyd?
Good evening, Commissioner. Lloyd Kennedy, Burgess Terrace. I too have been coming here since October, since I got the notice in the mail. Again, as most people probably in the audience are against the annexation, I've stated from the very beginning, most of my complaints would have been the legality of it, but the contiguity, which now there's some things going on there with that as well. Certainly, I moved out there, again, four years ago, somebody just mentioned four years, four years ago, about five acres, bought a nice house on the property for the rural aspects of it, but more importantly, I still maintain the fact that I don't believe that the original plan met the statutes of Florida. As a licensed professional engineer, it's my job to follow the codes that are required to build large structures, and sometimes my staff members will bring things to me that maybe doesn't exactly meet the code, and my job is to correct that. I believe that staff was in error on this because of the parallel versus perpendicular and the contiguity using the park land, but that's my opinion on it, so I'm just asking you guys now to vote no, and let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Conger?
Hello, all. I'm Lee Conger, I live at three-six, three-two-nine, North County Road, forty-four A, and it's Eustis, unincorporated. And tonight I want to talk about opportunity. Tonight you have before you the agenda, which has discussion of annexation of East Eustis properties, and recently we saw a document that itemized lofty changes to the L D R that were concerning. Since fall, annexation has been a huge issue because of the uncertainty of what'll be built in our beautiful rural area. Many of us attended the second negotiation between the county and city last Monday, the twenty-sixth, and we came away with hope that perhaps there could truly be intelligent and thoughtful joint planning. We unincorporated residents have been at odds often with the City of Eustis because of the push for sprawl as an answer to growth. But there's another way. What if we did not have to be at odds? What if there could be a plan that increases the tax base of Eustis through commercial and residential opportunity? What if this could be accomplished with significant preservation that would satisfy the East Eustis and other rural residents? What if I told you all of this is possible? You know, it's being done now, we've witnessed it, and we've seen it for the city of Groveland. They have some very interesting and intelligent plans going forward, and one concept design is called the hamlet. And in the hamlet, there's a tremendous amount of green space preserved, and in addition, there's enough to satisfy certain density requirements, plus, the internal part of the development has opportunity for businesses, which is a very intelligent way to handle the tax base issue. I've brought with me, and I'll hand it out when I end, the Groveland city map, and a press release talking about their concept and what they're looking at, and I hope you'll take a look at it, and, and consider discussing how this vision for growth is becoming a new frontier for innovative development, and the other thing is that this, this is an exceptional concept, and this could be Eustis. We ask that you hold off on any L D R changes and any annexation until the J P A has been amended and joint negotiations are completed, along with the two suggested community-wide charrettes, and also until you have fully considered all development options that exist for the city today. This commission has an opportunity to leave an amazing legacy of thoughtful, innovative planning for the City of Eustis and East Eustis residents. It would be exciting to see all of you step up into this new world, rather than accept the status quo of development sprawl. Thank you very much, and here.
Please, if you would just get those to Mary, she'll make sure we get them. Thank you so much. Donna Jordan? Donna?
Hi, my name is Donna Jordan, I live out on four-thirty-nine, but I travel forty-four A and Thrill Hill six days a week. And on February twenty-third, twenty-nineteen, this was my car, and I had to be cut out of it. A kid ran the stop sign on Thrill Hill and T-boned me out forty-four A. And my major concern is the density, and if we put five-hundred homes out there, that's at least a thousand more cars traveling those roads that I travel every day. And then if they have a kid who's a teenager, that's gonna add another car. This, I'm standing before you because of our great, you know, E M Ts, who could cut me out of this car. Two surgeries, and six months later, I can walk, but I still have trouble on your stairs coming in here. I'm just, that is my major concern. Another concern is people along this route, when you put the utilities out there, are they gonna have to tie into the utilities? For that cost that we heard about the last meeting, and that may not be in your plan, but that's also, it's happened in Mount Door, it happened to my in-laws in Leesburg, where they were forced to cap off their wells, and if they didn't, they would fine them. And it was at their expense that they had to do these things. Another concern is a lot of the neighbors out there have livestock. Your city ordinances say that it's generally discouraged, so if that now is annexed, does that mean we all of a sudden get generally discouraged from our livestock? You know, we love Eustis, we do a lot of business in Eustis, we travel Eustis, we shop Eustis, we just, you know, we're not opposed to Eustis, but we do like our country lifestyle, and just wanna be safe on our roads. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all I got, sir.
That's all I got.
Would anyone else like to speak on ordinance twenty-thirty-two?
Yes, come on up, please.
I'm sorry? You hear any ma'am? Again, I'm sorry.
Sharon Otterston.
Oh, okay, I thought that's who I guessed was just that.
No.
No, that was Donna Jordan.
Donna, okay, my apologies.
My name is Sharon Otterston, and I live on West Eldorado, which is right across the street from Tricia. I'm gonna talk about what some people have already said tonight, but they talked about how, you know, kids are worried about our environment, I'm worried about our environment. I was a science teacher at Eustis Middle School and Eustis High School for almost twenty years, and I know that trees absorb carbon dioxide and produce oxygen. And when you come in and just bulldoze them, you can say, "I'm planting a tree," but in my lifetime, it's not going to grow to be like the live oaks that are presently there. Also, having taught at Eustis schools, there was probably not a year that passed where we did not have a child either seriously injured or killed on forty-four A or forty-four, or when my kids were at Eustis High School, friends of theirs who killed other people in accidents. I have only lived out there about eighteen months, and the number of times that I have been passed on double yellow lines, there are no speed limits, and we talk about, you know, the resources and increasing police, you're gonna have to put some money into that, because like Donna said, it is not, those roads are so crowded now, and you look at the number of people that are selling their houses along the main roads, because it's no longer rural, and it's no longer safe. And I'm with them on pleading with you to keep that country, country, you know, protect our wildlife, protect our children, protect our way of life. And I've lived in Lake County all my life, I was born in Claremont, and we see what happened to Claremont. It went from being probably the most beautiful town in Lake County to being just a branch of Orlando. And you can't get what we have back, you can't remake that, and I don't care how many developers say they're gonna plant trees. Once you've torn it down, you can't rebuild it, and I just plead with you to think about what you have, and keep it that way.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on ordinance twenty-thirty-two? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing.
Let me just, before I come back to us, we've been negotiating with the county, and we're going to have that as part of our next agenda to where we talk about where we are with those negotiations. Tonight, I'm gonna ask that this commission go ahead and put this to a vote. My recommendation is to vote this down on the second reading, because of the negotiations we're in. Also, it is no longer continuous. By state law, this property is no longer continuous, and truthfully, we're breaking the law if we do annex the property in. Rules of this commission are in place, saying that if we vote something down, we're not allowed to bring it back for, I think it's six months to a year. However, it takes a three-person vote to overturn that, am I correct with that?
Yes.
So three of us could vote to bring this back at any time, so once it does become continuous, we would be able to bring it back and talk about it. I know that you all received the email of Tim Maslow's proposal that, from the City of Groveland, that he was at our last negotiating meeting. There are parts of that that are okay with me, there's a lot that I don't like with it, but I think if we continue to talk, we can come up with a good plan. So my, my thing tonight is, I say, "Let's bring this to a vote, see where it goes." My recommendation is to vote no on it, but that is me. So, that's where I am with things tonight. I don't think that the City of Eustis has done anything wrong, I think that we have looked out for our citizens, but at this point, our hands are tied with this property being continuous, so before us, we have ordinance number twenty-dash-thirty-two, what's the will of the commission? And I will go ahead and if I can get a first and a second, then we can have discussion if you all want to add anything to that. So what's the will of our commission on ordinance number twenty-dash-thirty-two? Okay, so it dies without a, without a second, so...
We don't have a motion.
Oh, I'm looking, that's what I'm asking for, I'm looking for a motion.
Yeah, we had a motion to continue or a motion to deny? And the purpose of the continuance would be to see what happens with F D E P?
I would move to continue.
I would second.
For at least thirty days.
I would second.
To a date certain?
To a date certain, what would that, are we looking, when's your next meeting? Mike?
We haven't said it yet, because we're gonna bring it back to you at the next commission meeting. The problem with, the governor has not appointed anybody to that board, and that board is sitting where it does not have a, and it hasn't for a while, so it can't hear cases. So that's our challenge there. It could be a year before we could, before they hear the case.
I would still move to continue, I mean, if we, I don't wanna move to, I don't know, should we move to the next meeting? I'm looking for a timeframe, guys, thirty days?
This is, you know, every time we do this, though, it puts our staff in a position to where they're having to continually work on this.
Well, okay, this is my motion.
Okay, go ahead.
To postpone it for thirty days, till the first meeting.
The first commission meeting in June, June third.
Okay.
June third? I would second that. Any, we've got a first and a second on that, any further discussion? And this is to postpone it till the June?
Third.
Third meeting. Okay, roll call, Mary.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Cobb?
Nay.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Nay.
And because of that, the next several ordinances, which are ordinance twenty-dash-thirty-three through twenty-dash-forty, as the, what's the will of the commission on those? The majority of the commission?
I would say do the same, I would say move it out for thirty days, for the June third meeting.
There's a motion.
I second.
Okay, we got a first and a second on that. Any discussion? Not hearing any, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Cobb?
Nay.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye, or nay, nay, and I'm gonna ask the commission to decide, to go ahead and ask someone else to negotiate with Lake County, you've taken my ability away to negotiate and push this forward, so...
How was that a negotiation tool?
Because of the way this is all going, I'm not, no longer willing to do it, so you all can discuss who you want to continue, okay?
All right.
Well, that sounds like a resignation from that committee?
Yes.
Okay, and then on the next agenda, we'll put that up for discussion. Thank you, Mayor. The next ordinance is ordinance twenty-one zero-eight, is the second and final reading, an ordinance by the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Lake County, Florida, adopting an amendment to chapter ninety-four of the Code of Ordinances to provide for water, wastewater, and reclaimed water rate adjustments to all, be consistent and to be made by resolution, repealing conflicting resolutions, providing for separability codification, an effective date in publication in accordance with law. Would anyone like to speak on ordinance twenty-one zero-eight? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of this hearing.
Commissioners, before us, we have ordinance twenty-one dash zero-eight, what's the will of our commission?
So moved.
Thank you.
I second.
We'll give that to Willie, so we have a first and a second, any discussion? Not hearing any, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Cobb?
Aye.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
The next item was the explanation concerning that textile recycling ordinance, Lori is out tonight, so we'd ask that you postpone that for the next meeting.
Looking for a motion to postpone?
So moved.
A second?
I have a first and a second. Mary, you need a roll call, or can I just ask if you all are in favor?
I think you can do a...
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the like sign. Passes unanimously.
And the other two ordinances were also continued, so that concludes my portion of this meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Come down now to future agenda items. Karen, anything for a future agenda item?
I don't have anything except I'm really confused, and I wish we could have talked about what...
About it the next meeting.
Okay.
Emily?
No, I don't.
Okay. Nan?
No, sir.
Willie?
Nope.
Nothing? All right. Reports for the commission. Nan, anything to report?
I just want to say that I had the pleasure of riding around with Mr. Rick Garrick. Is it last week, this week, last week? And we had a great drive around Eustis, and he's been working on a few things as far as, you know, cleaning up Eustis and getting this little tidied up. And I just want to say thank you very, very much. It's looking wonderful, so thank you so much. I appreciate all the hard work. I've seen the guys.
Anything else, Nan?
No, sir.
Willie?
I want to second what Nan said. I've seen him on Orange Happy Good Wedding.
Yeah. Looking a lot better.
Yeah, I almost got out there and worked with him.
There you go.
Did a great job.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Do you want to talk about Saturday night?
Saturday night, Eustis High School and Eustis Middle School, they're having a jazz, a jazz review. And they'll be playing with Thomas McClary, the founder of the Commodores. So it would be great if you all could come out. It's a free event in the park, 7:00, 7:30. 7:30, so it'd be great.
Silent auction at 6:00.
Yes, silent auction. They have some really cool stuff, so please come out and join us. Darren Park, yes.
Down at the band show. A lot of people don't really know that Eustis High School Band Program is one of the oldest continuous band programs in the state of Florida, and these young people do a tremendous job. If you've not heard these jazz bands, I encourage you to come out and listen to them. They're put on.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else, Willie?
And the weather's supposed to be great, so come on out.
No excuses.
Well, for 7:30 at night.
Yeah.
That's it for me.
Thank you.
Hotter, just hotter.
Mr. Emily?
I was wondering, and if it would be possible, City Manager, to extend the summer senior breakfast program, and if we could do it maybe at the women's center. They have to stop during the summer when school isn't out and the kids are taking over that facility. And, Mr. Craig, perhaps you guys could help me understand if it would be possible to continue the senior breakfast?
If their flesh is willing, our spirit is equally willing.
Okay, they are.
Okay.
Have it from a good source.
Okay. Mama told you, right?
Yeah. That would be great.
Anything else, Emily?
That's it, thank you.
That would be great to have that program continue throughout the summer.
They love it. That's their only social event.
They love it, and with COVID, they've all been stuck inside, so getting them out and getting them out with other people is a good thing to do, so...
Thank you.
I, yeah, I went out with them last couple of weeks and called bingo. There's nothing they enjoy more than, you know, winning a cleaning...
Paper towels.
Paper towels, and so...
They do like it. They do like it.
It's a great event.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Manager?
We've been receiving information from the Florida Lead to Cities regarding -- collecting information regarding the America Rescue Act money. The money, I understand, have you done the indication of how many is coming in?
We are still waiting to get the money and hear from the Treasury Department what we can do with it.
Okay. You haven't indicated any timeframe yet?
No.
Okay. We think they're moving closer because they're gathering information, so hopefully we'll have that before you with more clarified guidelines as to what we can do with the funding.
All right. Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Mr. Attorney?
Nothing, sir.
All right. Well, this week is a week where we celebrate our professional municipal clerks, and the commission would like to give Mary this card and just a little -- there's a small token of our appreciation in here. Mary, we could not do what we do without you, and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Don't tear up, so I also ask that you keep Mary and her family in your prayers. Mary's mom passed away last weekend, and Mary's mom's visitation was last night, but she would not let them do the funeral today because of the commission meeting today. So the funeral's tomorrow morning, so keep her family in your prayers, so. Couple more things that I'd like to share with you. This has been one of those weeks where Facebook has been an enemy, and I want all of you in here to listen, and please, when you write something on Facebook, think about what you put on it, because if you're not telling the whole truth, it is not the truth at all. This commission has come under attack by some things that are totally not true. And one of my jobs as mayor is to defend the city and to defend this commission. Please, if you're going to post, post the truth on things. You know, last week, we had a vote three weeks ago about annexations and about not forcing annexations. It was a five to nothing vote. Earlier this week, there were Facebook posts being that we were force annexing people. Just be honest with your post. It was to the point this week several times where I almost came down here -- Mary knows that I called her last week and even asked if I resigned from office, did the city of Eustis have to have a special election? I don't need the headache and the hassle of stuff that I get put through at times. I love my city, and that's why I sit here. There was a joke earlier during the finance part about what we get paid. We get $5,400 a year as city commissioners here in Eustis. And the joke is, and Nan and Willie have joked on this, that they were told that it's two meetings a month. It's a lot more than two meetings a month, folks. There's a lot of -- we visit out -- we have visited, all of us have visited in the Thrill Hill area. We visit all over our community. There's meetings we go to. Please, just think about what you post. It would make life a lot easier on all of us, and we can make better decisions if we're not getting so deep in the weeds over stuff that really don't matter. Every one of our cards are in Sarita's office in the city manager's office. Every one of them have our cell phone numbers on it. We're not trying to hide from any of you. If you want to meet with us, call us. We'll meet with you, not run from anybody. Never have, never will, and I don't think anyone on this commission will. So please, just do us a favor, and when you do post, be honest with your post, okay? Couple really good things and neat things that we've got. Of course, we've got the concert Saturday night, and I'm excited about that. We've got one of our boys' track teams that's going to state on Saturday, and they run Saturday morning. Keep them in your thoughts and prayers, and hopefully they bring back the state title for us. Our ladies softball team from Eustis High School won their first game in regionals last night. They beat Merritt Island 10 to nothing, and they're going to play either Bishopmore or Rockledge next week. So as soon as we find out where that game's going to be, we'll get it on our city website so that folks can come out and encourage them one. This is probably one of the best softball teams that I've seen in a long time, and I think they might be able to bring us home a state title, so looking forward to that. They're ranked number one in 4A in the whole state of Florida, number eight in softball in the state of Florida, regardless of the size of school, and they are now up to number 13, I believe, in the nation. So they've got it going on, so let's give them some encouragement. Sorry to be a downer in parts of that tonight, but I just wanted to get that off my chest. I'm staying, not going anywhere until the voters tell me to go because I love Eustis. And I'm hoping one day, all of you will be residents of our city, but in a right way. So thank you for being here. We're adjourned.